I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson, absent. McKinney.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Move on to the next item. We have no proclamations, presentations, or public hearings, so let's go to announcements. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
I don't believe so.
No announcements? Okay. So I have one announcement for 2018 to get everybody in the right frame of mind for today's council meeting. So this is a very old ordinance from the 1913 book on dance houses. All right, so the City of Laramie ordinance read, "If any person or persons shall keep or maintain, for gain or otherwise, within the limits of this city, any hall, house, room, or place wherein persons of lewd, evil name, or reputation of both sexes are permitted to congregate together for the purpose of dancing, he, she, or they shall be deemed guilty of disorderly conduct and upon conviction thereof shall be punished by a fine of not less than $5, nor more than $50, for each and every offense." Now, I'm unclear, is that having an offense of a house or for each time somebody dances in the house? I don't know. But I wonder how long that one was on the books? City Attorney, have we taken that off the books?
I could research that.
Okay. So we'll go on to the next item is disclosures by city council members. Do we have any disclosures from any city council members? I have one disclosure, and then I will be recusing myself on item 8G. That's the slight redo of the board terms for the Parks, Tree &amp; Rec Board because I have a family relation. So let's go on to consideration of changes. Vice Mayor.
Okay. I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. We are moving from the consent agenda, item 8F, to 11A, to the regular agenda. And our second change is that we are deleting item number 11 on the regular agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McKinney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the agenda be as changed.
Second.
Second by Councilor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay. I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stoner. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson, absent. McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes, with the exception of 8G, and I am recusing myself on 8G.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, let's move on to the regular agenda. Item number 10 is Councilor Stoner.
I move that council approve Resolution 2018-07, amending the Parks and Recreation Department master fee schedule as indicated in Attachment A with an effective date of May 7, 2018, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor.
Director Fieser. Honorable Mayor, City Council, before I turn this over to Jody for her presentation, just want to remind you that the changes that you're going to see tonight are in response to trying to develop some recurring revenue, which I think we've discussed before. In my mind, recurring revenue is the best way for us to close cost recovery and to find ways to help sanctify the city budget. This is one small step as she goes through the process. Keep that in mind as we move forward, and then look forward to the future on where we could potentially go with this type of development.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Jody.
Recreation Manager, Garen.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I will try to be relatively brief if I can, and then allow you guys to ask questions about the materials that are presented in your packet. A couple of things, you'll recall that not too long ago, we removed the park fees from city ordinance and put them into a resolution format. This is a follow-up on that process. So now you're going to start seeing the park fees along with the recreation fees in the master fee schedule. This year, most of our revisions don't actually increase fees, so I'm not going to go through most of those, but I'd be happy to answer questions on them. I think they're pretty self-explanatory. The exception really is the athletic fields. And this has been an idea that has been percolating, honestly, since I've been in the division for the last five years. We first adopted a system of charging for use at athletic fees in about 1996. They were updated in 2003, and then in 2008, and they have not been updated since that time. The structure that we have had has always been associated with per player. It's been a per-player fee. So if you have 50 kids in your group, you have a fee based on that number. There were three tiers, so you had a lower amount for the groups that had the most kids, kind of a middle amount for most of our groups was $12. So it's $7, $12, and $15, I believe. Anyway, those fee structures have been the format that we've been following for a long time. We also would like to try to offset the maintenance fees for athletic fields somewhat. So we're shooting for about a third of the cost. The athletic fields cost us about $100,000 in total maintenance costs a year. That's staff time. It's also a part of our part time, excuse me, part of our full-time staff as well as our part-time staff. It's electricity, it's chalk, and, you know, infield mix, all the things that we have to have to maintain those fields. We also looked around at other communities in the region to see what they do, and I'll tell you, it varies pretty widely. And everything from very low fees and no service, and by no service, I mean you have to buy your own equipment, you have to drag your own fields, everything, to communities that charge for practices, for games, and per player. So the structure that you see before you tonight is our recommendation, and it is based on trying to associate services with the fees. So we're trying to get to a place where if you want something on the field, you pay for what you're requesting, and you don't pay for, you know, just a per-player fee that isn't associated necessarily with your actual use. It seems like it's hard to make the case, for me, anyway, that 50 kids cost more than 30 kids, or 100 kids cost more than 50 kids, because sometimes the maintenance, really, it doesn't increase, really. There's a base level of maintenance that we have to provide on those fields for safety, and then there's the spiffy stuff, you know, getting it prepped for a game and making it look good. So what you see before you on the fee structure is reflected in this spreadsheet I'm going to hand out to you, and I hope that it will explain, but it is a little complicated, so I want to go through it with you all. And there should be enough copies for staff, too. So what I did is I took a look at the size of the field and the amount of maintenance that each field requires. And one of the things that we saw was that our baseball and softball fields and our soccer fields, when you look at them from a size and that initial maintenance, probably are kind of similar, but in terms of the ongoing maintenance throughout the season, they vary widely. Soccer fields really don't require a lot of maintenance on a weekly basis relative to baseball and softball. Baseball and softball have to be drug daily to flatten and level them for safety. When we have a game, they have to be prepped for a game. After the game, they have to blow out the stands, they have to empty the garbages. It's just a very different kind of field to maintain than a soccer field. So what you see on this spreadsheet are two different configurations. At the top is the softball and baseball, the bottom, or the middle, I guess I should say, is the soccer. You'll see that there's a fee per field for what in softball and baseball is Schedule 1, 2, and 3. Schedule 1 are our small fields, like the T-ball fields. Schedule 3 is cowboy, and only cowboy. Our Little League fields in Aragon are really at La Bonti also. The La Bonti softball field is also that Schedule 2. So those are kind of our most heavily used, honestly, mid-sized field. There's also a game prep fee for softball. That would be charged at their request. So if they have a doubleheader and they don't require game prep in between games, they don't need it. We won't do it. And then additional weeks. One of the things that we found is that seasons vary by sport, and also teams sometimes consider something in the season that maybe we wouldn't consider a season. So like, for instance, one season is not a whole year of athletic activities. It's spring, fall. It coincides with their registration and kind of a seasonal activity. So when you look at baseball and softball, you would have, when you're scheduling your fields, you would decide which fields you want. You would go ahead and schedule those weeks. You'd schedule your games, say you have two games a week, you'd schedule those, you'd be charged for those. And then if you go beyond 12 weeks, you have a per-week fee. That enables teams that might want to bring a big tournament here to have a big tournament without having to start completely over with the fee structure if they're going to go, say, 14 weeks instead of 12. Most of our teams are really going to be in that 12-week window, and it's up to 12 weeks. We weren't intending to prorate that fee so that it's like on a per-week basis. It's, you've got a 12-week season, most of them start early, you know, usually in April, early April for softball. Same for soccer, although sometimes it starts in March if the weather permits. And then that'll go through their tournament. Soccer is very similar, except that there is no game prep fee because the staff don't go out and prep per game. They go around, they pick up garbage like they do for all the other parks. They mow, they line, but it's not something that they go out and do a specific game prep for. And those are broken down in four sizes, so you see the 4V4 all the way up to the 11V11. When you look at this holistically, one of the things that you need to take into account is the amount of revenue we're currently generating from our athletic fields. If our goal is about $35,000, you know, what are we bringing in now? That's down at the bottom on the left, and you'll see that our total that we're trying to recover is about 100. It's 99, 403. And currently, we're bringing in about $15,000 out of the $34,000 that we would like to recover. Okay? The other thing is, we looked at proportionately, how much of these services do the different sports require in terms of weekly maintenance? Soccer requires about 20% of our allocation, and softball and baseball requires really about 80% of it. So what we've done is we've taken an approach that keeps soccer relatively at the same level, and it begins to increase the softball and baseball per, you know, per this cost recovery that we're looking at. So if you look over at the top right-hand side, you'll see it says 2017 fees. That's per group, and I will tell you, this is probably not 100% exact. When I went back and looked at the numbers, we've taken kind of an average of the last couple of years to get a rough number. The teams have varied in the numbers of players per year, and I broke it down, but, you know, it can be 34 one year and 50 the next year in a group. So this is a general statement, but you can see the percentage is quite high. And I will tell you, that caused me some heartburn, and I did a lot of, you know, adjusting, trying to get to a place where I felt like when you looked at the real dollars per season for a group, that it was something that I thought they could probably either fundraise or raise some funds from their players to cover, because my goal is not to drive them out of the parks. But this is something that, over time, we intend to increase. I'll be completely transparent with you. It's not unlike what we've done out at the ICE Arena with our amateur hockey club. They did all the fundraising to help us get that off the ground. Initially, they had a lower fee. Over time, it's continued to climb so that they get a little closer to our normal user group fee. So same kind of thing. We're just trying to get to a place where they're paying for a more realistic amount of what the services are that they've requested. So that's what we're presenting. I'd be happy to explain it in a little more detail or answer questions, and we'll do as directed in terms of working with this.
So let's start with questions first, for city staff. Councilor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. My main question is just, can you explain how you set your cost recovery goals? Is it through the board? How often do you look at the, and then is this 35%? Has that been that way for a while, and we've fallen short, or is it new?
Mayor and Council, setting a goal is new in terms of our athletic fields. We really haven't done that historically, but it's a very common approach in Parks and Recreation that you try to determine based on the value to the community and the user group that you're setting the fees for, how much of it you want to recover. The Rec Center, we recover typically between 75 and 80% of our total cost, which is really good, and that's always been our goal. Our goal at the ICE Arena is about 75%. We've never set one in parks, and so this is something new for us. It's a general fund item, which means, you know, general taxes are paying for it, but it is something that we can charge for services. Because most of these are youth groups, youth user groups, it's hard to say, the cost recovery goal is fairly low, but it's also mixed in with, like, our leagues, the softball leagues that we run, and a few other things. They don't generate a ton of money, so I think 35%, we're not quite reaching even with all of those adult sports lumped in, so.
Great. And then, just to follow up, is this determined by your board, or is this something that you drafted?
Mayor and Council, so the percentage is something that we recommended to the board. They didn't set it as a percentage. They review this cost, or I guess this fee structure recommendation, and forwarded it on to you. They typically, we have a lot of discussions. In fact, honestly, like the amateur hockey club, the fee structure rising was their push to recover. So they haven't set the percentage, but they certainly have seen this particular worksheet. And the overall philosophy really is in our master fee, or, excuse me, not our master fee, our master plan, our Parks and Recreation master plan, that philosophy.
Great. Thanks. Councilor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. Jody, I was contacted by, sorry, by the American Legion baseball team, and they have a number of teams that play, and they talked to you about the fee increase, and they understand the structure somewhat, but they were a little bit, and I'm sure some representatives might be here that will talk a little bit better about the situation, but they were concerned about the increase of the 194%. It seemed like they were kind of being dumped upon to help out with recovery cost for the maintenance and so on. And I know you've met with them. Can you go over a little bit more about the philosophy for Legion baseball?
Counselor, when you look at the dollars here, you're looking at about an $1,100 increase for the Legion baseball per year, because that's their season. The percentage is high. They are one of the groups, though, that has really benefited from the per-user structure because they have a very low number of users. The thing is, though, when you have 35 kids playing on a field and you have games that require prep each game, it doesn't cost more necessarily for that field if you're a youth baseball team versus a Legion team. It's just that you have fewer kids in your group. And so they really, as a group, it's because they have lower numbers. The Laramie Youth Baseball usually has about 400 kids. The girls' softball's about 150, so they have more kids to offset the cost. The thing is, this is based on the number of fields you schedule. They schedule cowboy because that's the field that most easily accommodates them, and they have a pretty high number of games. So they have 40 games typically per season. And so, yeah, in real dollars, it is significant. And there again, you know, that could be reduced. I know that there's been suggestions, well, perhaps we can step into it. What I'm telling you is that is our intent. This is our first stab at it. If you'd like us to reduce it, certainly we can do that. And I think we could, you know, you could set a goal for us if you wanted to that we could change. But our intent was to get to an amount that was reasonable, and it seems to me that, you know, if you have a league, I don't know what their overall budget looks like and how much this is able, they could absorb in this, but that Schedule 3 field is also used by, like, the Colts. They're outside of this agreement. They're treated as a separate agreement, and they pay a different type of rate structure. It's higher because it's an adult. But certainly, this acknowledges the amount of maintenance, the type of field. You'll recall, we just made a, we've actually, over the last several years, made several pretty significant improvements to cowboy in terms of the infield and whatnot to try and keep that field really, really sharp, looking good, so.
Other questions for staff? I have a quick question for you. Did you have representatives from any of these organizations come into the Parks, Tree, and Rec Advisory Board meetings and speak with the board members, voice their concerns to the board members? I'm just wondering, how much of this discussion has already been had?
Sure. Madam Mayor and members of the council, so at the council, or, excuse me, at the advisory board meeting, I believe the soccer team is the only one that came and voiced an opinion in favor. They like the structure because it's a little more foreseeable. They schedule this number of fields, they know what they're going to pay. The conversations, we've reached out to all the user groups that we currently have so that they know what's coming. We've had the discussion. Because I wasn't sure how the advisory board was going to receive it in terms of a whole new structure, because it is really different, we wanted to take that to them before we threw it out to the whole communities, recognizing that, you know, this could be modified. The advisory board asked us if we had considered leaving the structure alone and maybe just increasing the fees, perhaps doubling them. It doesn't really get us to that fee-for-service kind of concept. Certainly, we could do that. I think that actually would increase their fees more than what we're doing in a lot of instances, so different groups would be affected differently. So, but we have had some of those discussions, and it's appropriate, I think, for you all to hear from them as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for city staff? Councilor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. Jody, I just have one more question, and this might be, I might not just be catching on to what you've presented. If, let's just say, the youth baseball and the girls' softball were both on Schedule 1, and they had the same amount of games, but for some reason, the softball team was taking twice the amount of time, if their practices were twice as long, is the amount of time that they're renting out the space incorporated into this at all?
Mayor and Council, the amount of hours is not. However, the way we do this is, we have an athletics supervisor who receives all the schedule requests and sorts through that per field and tries to accommodate them as best as possible, taking into account their practices and their games. Historically, because we haven't had as much pressure on our fields, a team would say, "I want blue field," and they would be alone on blue field. Now we're getting to a point where they are sharing fields, and so that allocation between practices and games is being scheduled more closely. And so we are taking that into account in terms of trying to make it equitable, but it's not charged for. That is one of the structures that some of the other communities did. They charged on a per-hour basis for practices and games. It gets, we haven't historically billed like that, so it increases the load for the billing office. Certainly, it's doable, but this might be a first step in that direction ultimately, because we're trying to charge people appropriately based on what they need, not, you know, just to cover our overhead, so.
Councilor Polikas.
So all of these price increases are labor-driven, the cost of setting up these fields and having them appropriately lined and so forth for the various activities, correct?
Yes.
Has there been any discussion as to these groups being able to do some of this work themselves to alleviate city staff, such as chalking the lines or creating out the infield? Just that, I'm not trying to ask specifically what they could do, but has there been any discussion that maybe they could take over some of these responsibilities to alleviate the cost?
Mayor and members of council, that is something that we've taken into account, and in fact, some of the listings for the number of games, we anticipated that the teams would probably want to rake the field in between games, like if they had a doubleheader, as opposed to asking for a game prep. There, it's a little bit of a balance. In some communities, we were actually quite surprised when we looked at other communities, that one of the communities in this state requires the teams, if they want it, they do it. They do all the maintenance, they buy their own equipment, they buy their own supplies. They don't provide any of that, they just charge them a per-player fee. It's very low, it's like $5, but they don't do anything for them, probably water and electric. There's other communities where they have the equipment and they let the teams do it. I will tell you some of that. I have, you know, we'd want to have somebody there to manage that to some degree because you don't want kids on heavy equipment without training and equipment, you know, to protect them. But there's a lot of things that they can do, and we're certainly open to it. So what we're taking into account here with that game prep fee is that they could do some of that. As far as the overall maintenance of the fields, we do have safety standards that we need to make sure we maintain, and so some of that base-level maintenance is really its safety maintenance, and I probably wouldn't want to farm that out, you know, for volunteer labor. I think it puts us to too much liability.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
I'm a little interested in drilling down as to how these different communities handle these fees. I know the American Legion travels around the state to various communities. I'm more interested in communities of equal stature, if you will, to what we have. In other words, you know, I've been to some of the parks and some of the communities, and it's just long grass there. They don't even cut the grass or irrigate it. So what I'm more interested in is, let's just take the American Legion, for example, in the various places they play, how do our fees line up to those type of communities?
Mayor and council, so looking at this, Cheyenne, our close neighbor, actually, they have a fee structure that is $30 per game, $10 per practice, and $10 per player. I haven't done the total calculation for a team like the youth baseball or Legion to compare it, but that's certainly higher than what we're proposing.
That would be higher than what we're proposing.
If you look at the, so most teams practice multiple times a week, and you're paying $30 an hour for, or, excuse me, $30 per game and then $10 per practice. That basically, you know, it's higher on a per-game basis than what we're proposing, plus then you have to schedule all your practices throughout the week. Typically, our teams are on the field probably about four days a week between practices and games, so you can, you'd have to do the math to figure out, how does it look exactly compared to it? Gillette, their hourly rental fee is $45, and that's per hour. They charge half of that for user groups, so if the user groups are in an agreement with them, they charge half of that per hour, though, so practices and games. Then they have lights, or $10, $10 for the scoreboard, and $25 to line the field, which is kind of a game prep fee. Let's see. Loveland has a $20 per hour fee that's discounted after two hours. They have $10 for chalk, $10 for lights, $10 for after-hours after 10 o'clock. So you're seeing kind of similar sorts of structures to what we're proposing. And I didn't break it down to see exactly what the cost comparison was, because I got them this afternoon, but, you know, gives you an idea. The ones that were the cheapest, Rollins, is $5 per player, no prep by city staff, and the groups use the city equipment. And the other one that surprised me, actually, was Casper, and they have $5 to $7 per player, and they do no maintenance.
Both of the, Rollins and Casper are both American Legion communities?
You know, the teams play there. I'm sure they have teams there. I couldn't tell you what that looks like for their teams because their numbers vary so greatly. Director Fieser could probably comment on Cheyenne in terms of what they pay, but numbers are different, too, for the number of people they have playing.
Director Fieser.
Honorable Mayor, through you to Councilor Polikas. Casper, Gillette, Cheyenne, Sheridan, they all fall in what you would consider the 1A American Legion. Rollins plays in the 2A, if I remember correctly, so they are American Legion communities, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for city staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, I know we've got at least one member, I think, that wants to talk to us, so we're going to go out to the public for comments on this. Would you like to come forward?
Hi.
So, if you can introduce yourself for the record, and then when you're done, there is a sheet on the second table behind the city clerk that I'll need you to sign when you're done.
My name's David Hayes. I'm the director of coaching for Laramie Soccer Club. So, I'm just here, as Jody previously said, we are in support of this change of fee structure, but our understanding is that when you break it down, the soccer club, despite only being 20% of the workload for the greens, or the ground staff, are still paying around 35% of the total fees that are being charged. So, I guess, and I, we understand it's because of the volume of players that we have, but we have made an effort in this past, I came into the job nine months ago, and we've made an effort in the past sort of six or seven months to, previously, there were two soccer organizations. There was LSA and Laramie Blizzard, and they were spread across five or six different locations in the city. And since I've come in, we, we've centralized those locations, so all of our recreational soccer takes place at one location, and all of our travel soccer takes place at one location. So, we've gone from having a number of locations and a number of fields to having, you know, three fields at the soccer complex behind the university, and I think we had six 4V4s and two 7V7s at, at the park in West Laramie. The escape, the name escapes me.
Kowanus?
Kowanus, at Kowanus Park. And in the spring, we'll be using DTI, the grass fields at DTI, so we'll be, we won't be using Kowanus, but we'll still only be at two locations with a similar number of fields. Like I say, we are in support of this, because as our numbers hopefully grow over the next few years, this fee structure will benefit us in terms of if we can stay at two locations, it won't matter how many kids we have. But still, we feel that maybe the cost is not necessarily, still not necessarily representative of what, you know, what we cost the city in terms of ground staff, in terms of what we'll be paying towards the percentage of money that is made through this, this change. So, that, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to offer public comment on this tonight? Please come forward.
Thank you very much. My name is Bill Wolf. I'm with the American Legion. I'm on the board, and I guess I can understand recouping some of the, of the money that we're behind, but in our particular case, it, the kids are paying for this. It's totally, you know, totally up to them what they can do. Seems like a lot of money to, in one fell swoop, to up the ante, so to speak, for us to do this. And also, the other night at the Rec, Recreation Board, Funding Board, we, we applied for some of that money, but of the total amount that was requested, the city of Laramie requested 75% of the total amount. They requested $345,000 of this money. We requested 10, and so on and so forth. A lot of, according to my, what I figure, this could be wrong, Cowboy Field, they requested $30,000 for equipment that will take care of Cowboy Field and putting repair in the backstops, things like that. The other fields, Little League, Aragon, things like that, they're $47,000. So, there's, it looks to me like $77,000 is, that the Rec, that the Recreation Department is requesting is, it's double-dipping to me. So, that's just my opinion, and thank you for letting me
Of course.
Say something.
Thank you for coming tonight. If you could sign that sheet, throw it on that table. Yep, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to offer public comment on this tonight? Okay, seeing none. Go back to council. Discussion by council members.
Could I ask another?
Yes, please.
Another couple of questions of, Ms. Garrett?
When the gentleman got up and spoke concerning the soccer, he made the point that they're actually paying, they're actually paying more than, more than others are. Could, could you address that and the reason for that?
Please.
Mayor and council, this is a direct reflection of the method we've been using. When you charge it on a per-player basis, they have a spring season, a fall season, and a summer season, and when you charge per player, they end up paying a larger dollar amount, because it's not associated with the, the actual services that they're requiring. If you look down here at the bottom in the middle of the page, where it says proposed recovery rates, so you see the total amount there for soccer, then baseball and softball, and then a percentage over there to the right, that's the percentage of the cost recovery goal that they're paying. So, what I've, what I've represented to you is that if we were to recover $35,000 and do it on a split that is associated with the use, 20% of that should be associated with soccer, and 80% of it should be with baseball and softball. Given our current economic circumstance, it didn't seem wise to me to reduce what we're doing on one of our user groups, but to try to hold it still. And there, one of the things that you'll see here in the middle for soccer, the summer field use, that's largely adult. I contemplated pulling that out and putting them under a different type of agreement so that they stayed the same, and that the youth groups would be in this, in this structure alone. It's something that we could certainly do, you know, if that's the pleasure. You see that the, the adult rate goes down, and typically, that's not quite our philosophy. Our, our philosophy is that the adult league should cover more of their cost, and youth leagues, we can subsidize more heavily. So, that is certainly, that's certainly an option. But that's why we're, that's why we are where we are, and that's why their rates are projected in this, in this cost recovery strategy to remain pretty static.
And the other question I had is, I'm assuming when you're talking about a 30% recapture rate, you're talking about your operation costs and not your, your improvements, so your
Correct.
Long-term maintenance costs. If I heard you right, these, all of these fee structures are pretty much running at about the 30% recoup rate. In other words, the, our general fund is subsidizing all of these programs to the tune of about 70% just for operations. Did I summarize that correctly?
Mayor and council, that's correct. Additionally, I think the point raised about the, the rec mill, it's, it's an important one in terms of the amount of money in the community that is being directed into recreation. If the city of Laramie had to come up with that money out of the general fund to make the improvements to keep these facilities in good shape, that would be in addition to this maintenance amount. And we have been more aggressive in the last few years, trying to make some improvements to the fields, especially the baseball and softball, because they've been neglected, frankly. And we do have some improvements that we hope will be coming in the next few years.
Thank you.
Any other questions while she's up here?
I have a question, Mayor.
Counselor Stoner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I have one more question for you, Jody. Do you have a, an outlook, since this is a somewhat new idea for us to apply, or for the department to apply, do you have an outlook on how often you're going to reconsider these and potentially change the fee structure? I don't know if that's something the board talked about, or if you have in your mind annual consideration. I'm just wondering if this number is going to be that way for a while, or if eventually you see it increasing more?
Mayor and council, so we didn't discuss exactly how many, how often we would do it. This will go into effect the beginning of May. It won't actually affect the groups until those that are scheduling in the summer are scheduled for the fall season. So, most of the teams have about a year to plan for it and get prepared for it. We're not going to do this mid-season for a team. Given that, you see the master fee schedule revisions annually before the budget cycle, and we bring forward revisions that we think are appropriate, given the global look at our fee structure. I would anticipate probably every two, three years, we'll look at a little incremental change. And part of that is because we need to see how this, how this rolls forward, what the net effect is on the user groups, and how that affects their numbers, and, and the whole, the whole thing. Sometimes, you, you make a change, and you think you've thought of all the scenarios and how everybody's going to use it, and what the total impact will be, and then, you know, you're, there's a surprise, because they found a way to minimize their costs in a way that we hadn't anticipated. So, if everything goes as anticipated, I would say probably every two to three years is what I'd like to do, and make it more incremental.
Thank you. Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor, for Mr. Wolf's consideration. So, Legion baseball begins generally in May, weather permitting and all. So, this fee will not go into effect this season?
Correct. For the upcoming season, it will not be in effect. It'll be in effect a year from now.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Garrett while she's up here? Counselor Schuster?
Thank you for that. I mean, like I said, they, they at least have a year to prepare and possibly some fundraising off-season to, to try to mitigate some of this. So, that is a lot helpful, because what we have done to us, sometimes we don't have much prep, so I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other discussion or comment by council?
I actually had a comment. Well, I'll, I'll go to the vice mayor first.
You know, it's, it's unfortunate that, that we find ourselves in this position to, to going, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, from roughly a 15% recovery, is that about, to closer to a 30% recovery, and it's off the backs of, of young athletes. The unfortunate thing is our, our, our budget situation, our economic situation for the city of Laramie is, is in trouble, and it's unfortunate that we have to do this, and none of us here, I'm assuming those that are going to vote for this, are, are happy about this. You know, this is, this is a very difficult, a difficult decision, and it happens to be an unfortunate one, from my perspective. But 30% recovery is, is perhaps what it needs to be for a while, and let's hope it doesn't have to be 50 or 70% recovery, so.
Counselor Polikas?
Yeah, I was just going to say, actually, I'm relieved to hear that particularly with the emergent, American Legion that's picking up 194% increase, that it's, in essence, they've got a year to plan for it before this is going to happen, because I was actually going to put an amendment forward to do 100% increase this year and then 99% increase next year, but I, I think the way it's structured, it's covering that without an amendment. I will say this about sports and so forth. When I was a kid, I loved sports, and we didn't pay for anything, and it was wonderful. Unfortunately, the world's changed, and budgets have changed, and everything else, and it's just too bad, but more and more responsibility comes upon the parents to support their kids in sports. It's the way it is, and I don't think there's much I can do about it as far as changing the world when it comes to that type of thing. So, it's unfortunate, but it's the direction we have to move in.
Any other discussion by council? I will, Counselor Stoner?
Mr. Wolf indicated that the boys have to carry the full amount of this. I, I thought it would be nice if they could have sponsors that would cover some of the fees. Hopefully, that they could increase their request from the rec mill board, because that's what that's intended to do, is to encourage more participation and more availability of the schools, of the city's facilities. So, I, you know, I don't like the idea of making it to where the players have to take the, you know, the hit, because it would be a tragedy to have a talented, interested young man or young woman that would be involved in American Legion. I've seen, I saw a great picture for American Legion one time. It was a lady, and she was terrific. But I would like to see that we could take the pressure off of this, off of the athlete, and find some, some ways in which we could do that. And I, I would encourage, you know, the, the staff to look at reducing that 194% for the following year, to where we could, you know, find a way to fix that, so that, you know, the biggest increase doesn't fall on just one, one sport. So, I, I, again, I, I want to make sure that we look seriously at all times to make sure that all the young men and young women that want to participate in sports activities in the community have the opportunity to do so.
Counselor Stoner?
Mayor, thank you. I agree with all of the sentiments that have been shared. Youth sports are something that are very, very near and dear to my heart. I think it's better that we're moving away from a per-person fee rate, because I think that there are a lot of loopholes in that, and I think this is a better, a better structure. I'm just wondering, and I think it is natural to raise fees, especially given, you know, our budgetary situations. When I see a fee increase that's over 100%, I guess I kind of went into the corner that Counselor Polikas mentioned, and I would still be open to the idea of proposing, not just specific to American Legion, but in general, if there's a fee increase of over 100%, the organization would have the option of asking for that to be staggered over a two-year period. And I don't know if that's something that we should talk to.
Director Fieser, I think would like to address that. To address that. Yeah. Director?
Honorable Mayor, to the city council, you know, I appreciate what we're talking about, and I know we throw out percentages, and it's easy to look at a percentage and think, oh, it went from 25% to 75%. It's a 200% increase. We're talking about a field that, a field fee or a cost here that's gone from $600 to roughly $1,800 is the estimate. To give you a little point of reference, some of the items that we're trying to recover is, our electrical bill at Cowboy alone last year was a little bit over $7,000. So, we're not even recovering a significant portion of the electrical bill at this point, and we're also extending this out two years from now. And again, I realize that this is a difficult move to make, and when you look at percentages, it gets covered up by thinking, when you look at a percentage, or when you get an email that states, "Look at this increase that's been so heavy on us," but when you look at the real dollars, is that increase actually that impactful? So, I'd encourage you to think about that, too, as you're thinking about percentages. Again, as Jody stated, we're open to changes. If you want to make amendments and, and suggest changes, we're not certainly opposed to that. We will certainly abide by the council's decision.
Mayor and council, I want to throw out one other thought, too. However we do this, I would focus this on the structure and not on a group, because we have to apply a uniform structure to all of our groups, and that's why we looked at the field size and put them in a schedule. You know, Cowboy Field is our signature field, and it is no insignificant amount of maintenance to maintain that field. There's a reason that, you know, people like to be there. So, we could, if we were to try and reduce it and target it to the Legion, you would be reducing either the, the base season fee primarily, or the game prep fee, and I would encourage you to think about that across the board, and then what does that look like across the board, and does that make sense? I put this in a spreadsheet so that I could manipulate it, and I have been all over the roadmap on this. And this was really where I came to, that was like, it was really the most equitable I could come up with to maintain a, a tiered structure that acknowledged the size of the fields. One of the proposals we initially considered was that the game prep fee probably should be staggered as well, because it takes a lot more to prep Cowboy than it does, like, one of the T-ball fields. But just, I mean, keep that in your thinking, because it's, it's hard to try and figure out, how do you target the places that you really feel like it's most appropriate? But these are all youth, these are all youth activities, and, I mean, the comments are not, not lost on us. We've been, we've been trying to figure out how to make this fair and, and work for everybody. We'll be happy to, happy to tweak it if you'd like.
Thank you. So I guess I would like to add to the council a couple of thoughts. I think from the conversation, so first, Ms. Garrett hit on what I was going to say, and that these changes are coming forward from our Parks and Recreation staff, whose lifeblood is to provide youth sports and recreation in this community. I think this is very difficult to even recommend, to bring this forward. But generally, as you just heard, government does things that don't cost flow. Imagine how much these teams would have to pay if they had their own fields, that they had to pay the electricity and the water for, and the maintenance for, and everything else. But that's what we're here to do, to provide this amenity to our community, and youth sports is so much more valuable than just athletic activity. It's social development, it's a lot of things to a lot of kids and a lot of families. It's incredibly, incredibly important. But on the other side of things, I also see we are not the only city in this position, specifically in Wyoming, but more nationwide, with cities that are struggling with municipal budgets, where sales tax is not what it used to be, and it's not keeping pace, and you get put in these terrible positions of trying to figure out how to pay for things. You know, the general fund pays for the police officers, the firefighters, and Parks, Recreation, and streets. We like all of those, and we need to keep all of those. My hope for this fee change, and I'm supportive of it, because I think we have to do it, but my, the caveat is, I hope that we can continue to work all the scholarship programs and opportunities, because I never want a young player to not be able to play, because their family can't afford it, because their parents can't afford to write that check for the baseball whatever, the shoes, or whatever it is that's required, and that extends not just to baseball and softball, but to all of our youth sports. I think it's incredibly important to keep those as open and accessible to everybody as possible. So I know this is a tough choice, and I really appreciate everybody working their hardest on it, and I don't like being in this position either. Is there any other comments? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Stoner?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
No.
Hanson, absent. Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, one no, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto our next item, which will be 11A, and that'll be Counselor McKinney.
11A, consideration of contract between the city of Laramie and Janine Jordan as city manager. I move to approve that will employment contract between the city of Laramie and Janine Jordan as city manager, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stoner. City Attorney?
Mayor, council. As you know, Ms. Jordan has acted as city manager under a contract starting in 2008, and I believe before that as interim or temporary city manager. In any event, the 2008 contract has been amended three times, in 2011, 2013, and 2016, leading us to this point, which is largely, if you want to call it, contract hygiene. The contract that she has been operating under has existed in four different places, and this was an opportunity to put all those amendments together into one contract, make sure that the current contract comports with current practices. And so that's what you have before you. We will now have, Ms. Jordan will now have a single document that we can all refer to, and the council can refer to. You have seen this contract. Its essentials are that the city manager has the same duties as she has had for over 10 years. The city manager has the same oversight, or you have the same oversight over the city manager, as the council has had for 10 years, annual review, setting goals. The city manager will have the same pay that she has had under the contract as it existed before, same pay and benefits. This contract will have the same term and termination provisions as existed under the old contract with all its amendments. This contract does not have a term, but it can be terminated if the city manager chooses to resign, if the city council chooses to dismiss the city manager for cause, or if the city council wishes to move on and dismiss the city manager, not for cause. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions for the city attorney? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Does anyone have any public comment to offer on this item? Please come forward.
My name is Tim Hale. I read in the paper today that the term used in the front page on the bonuses, that something affected, it was embedded. And when I think of embed, I think of a tick under someone's skin. I often thought maybe the more appropriate word was entitlement. This retention bonus started in 2010, and originally, it was supposed to be a five-year program. That's it. And it's with us today. There's been no special account on this retention bonus. I know of no audits on it. We've got a city manager that is on this flex time, which effectively, for all practical purposes, equals comp time. There's very little accountability or transparency in respect to the manager's flex time. If you look at car allowance, since the inception of our employment, of our city manager, and you look at all these extra compensations, $190,800, that doesn't include salaries from the inception of this thing. Now, when you do a five-year program, that we're going to give this retention bonus for five years, you're essentially obligating future councils to something that you're going to decide on tonight. And I think inherently, that's wrong. Future councils won't have any feedback on this, so you're deciding what something's going to happen. And typically, my impression is, when you start getting retention bonuses, bonuses of any sort, you're looking at exemplary performance. In my opinion, I believe our city manager lacks people skills. And what's interesting is, every time that there's a budget shortfall, it seems to fall on the community. We're not going to get leaf pickup anymore. We don't do Christmas tree pickup. We had a program, roughly $20,000 for the green waste dumpsters. It's already paid for. Uh-uh, can't have that. So all these things are always pointed, if there's ever going to be any cutbacks, it's pointed at the public. We heard tonight from Counselor Pierce that our budget is in trouble. And can you have it both ways? When you look at all the engineers and so forth that have mysteriously left the city, and under Janine's direction, we had a street with power poles in the middle of the street. That cost the city $60,000 to remedy that. You look at the lawsuits the city's had, and I would estimate eight to 10 of the lawsuits are settled out of court with taxpayers' money. I think this is a direct reflection on the management skills. But of course, the public and the council really doesn't know what's involved with these lawsuits. This is another example of the fallacy of transparency. I believe our city manager is the reason why House Bill 85 passed. And I think what you need to look at is, if state legislatures and state people can see the extravagant spending, you know, how much money is constantly being funneled to the city manager, they're going to question why they should be paying any additional dollars, state dollars, to the city of Laramie. And I recall, at a previous election campaign, Counselor Schuster said that if he's elected, he'll ask for a vote of confidence on our city manager. And I feel that's what's probably more appropriate tonight, rather than any sort of pay raise. One instance where a city employee received $16,000 in overtime.
Mr. Hale, you're going beyond five minutes. Can you wrap up your comments?
I wasn't aware there was a five-minute rule.
There's always a five-minute rule on public comment.
Okay. I feel that the council should represent the citizens, rather than Janine. One last thing. You know, Casper and Cheyenne have nearly three times the population that Laramie has, considering Laramie's got $12,000, or 12,000 students that are considered transient. The city manager should receive one-third the salary that the administrators in Casper or Cheyenne receive. That's not the case. So I think you need to walk the talk on the budget issues, and there should be discussion about cutbacks in the council's travel, things of this nature. You should show the community that you're willing to tighten your belt, and that includes Janine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Hale, can you sign the clerk sheet when you have a second for public comment? Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to give public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none. Any other discussion by council members? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson, absent. Gabriel?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. And with that, why don't we take a 10-minute break? We are on item number 12, and that is the vice mayor's.
Okay. Did you guys all ready? Because I am, surprisingly.
Is that right?
Okay. I move to pass Resolution 2018-09, granting city employees one additional holiday on May 4, 2018, for the 150th Celebration Day for the city of Laramie, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counselor Gabriel. This was a suggestion that came from...
The county.
Commissioner Chestnut. Yep. And, you know, this, we really don't do these but every 50 years, and there are some community events that are being planned for May 4, and so that was the suggestion, to give an administrative holiday so that all the community members and our employees can participate in the events that are going on. I guess I can answer any questions for anybody that has any. City Manager, did you have anything to add to that explanation?
No, no, not at all. But can I answer questions if you have them?
Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Schuster?
I remember this from when we used to give Christmas Eve off, depending what day Christmas Eve was, so I will ask what the cost will be to us in giving them a extra holiday. I'm going to support it, because it's only going to happen once every, I'm guessing, 50 years, and the next one that happens will be another council that gets to decide that one. It will not be us.
City Manager, do you have those figures?
Mayor and council, we did not run cost estimates, but I can tell you from memory, as Counselor Schuster indicated, typically, a city holiday declared costs in the realm, I believe, of around $50,000, the bulk of that being for our public safety professionals, many of whom are on duty. You know, we, let me reiterate that even with the declaration of a city holiday, we're only going to release nonessential staff on that day, so we would close administrative offices, but, you know, your fire departments and your essential staff and utilities and police would remain on staff. So usually, it's about $50,000, but we didn't update that number since last year, so it may deviate a little bit.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Almost out of public. Any other discussion by council on this? Counselor Stoner, can you hear us? I don't know if she's... Okay. City Clerk, can you do a roll call?
I can, I'm just on mute.
Okay. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson, absent. McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 13, Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is original ordinance on the first reading, and this deals with the amending various sections of Title 15 of the Laramie Municipal Code, and I will start it here. Original ordinance number 1978, amending various sections of Title 15 of the Laramie Municipal Code for the purpose of amending franchise utility installation standards, public improvement requirements, preliminary plat expiration, landscaping requirements, lot consolidation criteria, alley development requirements, central gathering area requirements, and fence standards, and correcting typographical errors and incorrect cross-references. I would move to approve ordinance number 1978, as recommended by the Planning Commission on first reading, in accordance with findings of fact and conclusions of law, and set a public hearing for February 6 of 2018.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. Senior Planner Bloom?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this ordinance is exactly what Commissioner Gabriel just said. It's a mouthful, lots of different sections of code. I think there's actually, there's over 56 sections in the ordinance itself. We presented this to the staff report. We've usually included the ordinance in the Planning Commission's staff report that'll go for you, because after amending the code so many times over the last decade, it seems to be easier for people to follow when you only have one set of numbers to look at. So we did modify the attached Planning Commission's staff report to strip their attachment, because their attachment is now your standalone ordinance. At the Planning Commission meeting we had on January, what day, January, well, at the last Planning Commission meeting, I'm not really sure what day that was, we, the Planning Commission modified one element of this proposed amendment package. There's presently a requirement in our city code that all new alleys that are dedicated are required to be 30 feet wide. The reason for that 30-foot width is so that if utilities are placed in there, you have at least 10 feet of separation between sewer lines and water lines, and then another 10 feet on either side of loaves. So if you're digging a trench, you don't have it collapse, or you're not digging in tight situations. Well, it's noted that these utilities, or utilities don't have to be placed in the alley, and alleys are actually at the discretion of the developer. So in the event that a developer wants to place alleys in the street, or utilities in the street in front of a development and still provide alley access, the Planning Commission amended the minimum size of an alley to 24 feet wide. So this allows for developments to be a little bit cheaper, to put alleys in, the 24 feet would allow for two-way traffic in that alley, and it would still allow for that alley access. So there's the amendment that the Planning Commission proposed. Staff is in support of that amendment. We would recommend that you carry on that Planning Commission amendment. Regarding the amendments here, we have actually summarized these all in the Planning Commission's staff report. One of the major pieces we're doing is, we are actually changing the name of what is called in our code subdivision minor. That's an application process, where you can take a platted lot, and you can divide it into two. We are renaming that to minor land division. We had some problems early on when it came to recording those administrative lot splits with the county, where they were concerned using the word subdivision in any document could be interpreted as needing the signature of the mayor and the clerk. So for the last several years, we've been referring to them as minor land division, so we're essentially changing all references to subdivision minor. So we're essentially changing all references to subdivision minor to minor land division across the board. As you can see in the Planning Commission memo, that affects, that's indicated in a variety of places in the attached ordinance, in sections one, four, six, eleven, thirteen, the list goes on. They're all summarized there. Sections two, three, five, seven, eight, nine, and ten, those are a follow-up to the last housekeeping amendment process that you all saw. What that did was it recognized the disappearance of the Community Development Department and that we are now a planning division and an engineering division, planning being under the city manager's office and engineering being under Public Works. These are covering a couple of those terms that were still out there that weren't covered in the global change before. So those are essentially housekeeping items as well. Sections twelve, nineteen, and twenty, this is an amendment to the planned unit development process. I believe Councilor Polikas had some concerns when the latest PUD was developed that we need to look at the potential for variances to be granted by the council in conjunction with the planned unit development process. With the last one we had, the developer had to actually have a variance granted prior to having consideration of the PUD by the Planning Commission and the City Council. It created a little bit more confusion for everybody, developers, public, members of Planning Commission and council. These amendments, this amendment in sections twelve, nineteen, and twenty do allow variances to be granted in conjunction with the PUD. So that makes you, the City Council, the decision-makers in those particular cases. Section fourteen of the ordinance is a targeted change that we have worked with the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance's Community Development Liaison Committee. This is extending the lapse period for preliminary plats from three years to five years. Right now, under code, if you file a preliminary plat, you're required to file a final plat and have it approved by the council within three years of that preliminary plat approval. Once a final plat is approved, you have another three-year timeframe. So we're proposing to change that to five years. What this will allow is for any new preliminary plats that come forward to remain active for five years. So say we have a slowdown, or say we have a developer that can't seem to get a plat in either that next summer or the other one, they're not behind the gun trying to get a plat in. That is something that the development community has requested, is additional time in between plats. So then, if they want, instead of doing a small subdivision, they can look at doing larger subdivisions every three years or four years. So they don't, so you have better economies of scale. Section seventeen is another item just to streamline the development process. This makes modifications to our lot consolidation process. Right now, a lot consolidation can only happen between two lots. We have a lot of applications where you might have three lots that are trying to be consolidated into one or four into one. When those applications come through, what we end up actually having are two companion applications that are side by side. One of them will consolidate two of the lots. The second application will consolidate the new lot that you're just about to create with another one. It creates a lot of paperwork. It creates a lot of confusion. Luckily, over the last few years, city engineering staff, planning staff, as well as the county clerk's office, has been able to make this process work and be very, very, as least confusing as possible for the developers and the landowners. This should make it easier. People are welcoming this change with open arms. Section twenty-one, just a simple housekeeping item. The word "may" is found in the home occupation section. "May" is a word you never want to have in regulations. It's discretionary. It conflicts with the remainder of the section, so it's just changing to "shall." For the record, that's been there since nineteen sixty-four, so it was actually moved over from the previous code. So it's been a long time overdue to get corrected. Section twenty-two, this is a new section that actually came as a result of some enforcement concerns. This allows for temporary uses to occur on undeveloped lots. Right now, under our code, a temporary use is considered an accessory use. So if someone wants to open up a roadside stand, possibly put a shipping container on a piece of land that's undeveloped, they're technically not able to do that because no principal use has been established. There are certain cases where staff believes that it is appropriate. For example, if a property owner owns land immediately next door and say they want to bring in a temporary use, like a shipping container or, say, some other type of stand, this allows for them to get permission from the city first. So they are able to do that temporary use. What we've, I'll use an example in, let's just say, I don't have a good example. So, but what this does is it allows for people in the event that they have a hotel and they might be doing a furniture swap, that if they wanted to place a shipping container on an outlot or an out parcel, they would be able to place that with the city's permission. And the city would be able to establish a clear timeframe and possibly require some type of bonding mechanism that would entice them to remove that container. Section twenty-three, this is just another typographical error. It's just in regards to collector streets. Basically, in this subsection of code, it conflicts with itself. It just says that you have a collector street, which is a major street. If you're putting a fence up, you need to have a higher level of design. So what this does is it just makes the chapter and the subsection flow together and not be in conflict. Sections twenty-four, thirty-nine, forty, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine, those all just correct incorrect cross-references. So it might say C, LMC, fifteen, fourteen, one hundred, throughout amendments, it may have changed, or the numbers may have been incorrect. So those are all just correcting cross-references. Section twenty-five is one that is just clarifying the prohibition for single-family residential lots to have direct access to collector streets. When we've had recent preliminary plats and final plats that have come through, you may have noticed that if another access exists, there is always a restriction noted on the plat that prohibits single-family homes from having direct driveway access to a collector street. They're forced to use the adjacent local street that they are set to connect, that they are able to connect to. Most recent plats you have seen that have done that is the upcoming Spring Creek Village subdivision that you will see. Most of the ones we've worked on with the county. We've also seen it with Stagecoach Edition, which is located up on Buford Street, and a variety of other ones. But these are designed to basically reiterate that single-family driveway access to those major streets is prohibited when alternative means are there. Section twenty-six is codifying a city policy regarding the acceptance of open space. Presently, our parkland dedication system has a formula that you enter the number of units. You look at the average persons per household in the community based on the census numbers, and then it spits out an acreage of parkland that would be dedicated. The city code right now reads somewhere around the line saying, if calculation is less than five acres, the City Council deems that impractical and requires a cash-in-lue dedication. We've removed that section of code. That basically gives the City Council a discretion that if they can find a smaller park site desirable, they can accept it as parkland. Right now, the way the code reads it almost forces your hand to take the cash in lieu when there are obviously some benefits of pocket parks in the community. Section twenty-nine is probably one of the more heavily discussed items from the past. This is in regards to the undergrounding of power lines. So the city of Laramie staff, planning, engineering, as well as the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance and representatives from Rocky Mountain Power, we all met to discuss the undergrounding of subdivisions. And we came up with this scenario. Essentially, if you have existing lines that are under six hundred volts, which is basically two-phase or less, they would have to be undergrounded when a property is subdivided. Remember, this is only subdivided. This isn't when it's just developed. So for example, McDonald's recently did a demolition and a rebuild. Those are able, those scenarios are able to happen without triggering the undergrounding of power lines because it's just a redevelopment of a site. When you have a subdivision where you're taking raw land and dividing it into multiple lots, at that point, that's when we begin the discussion of undergrounding. So what has been decided is probably the best for all parties is to leave any three-phase lines, so essentially lines that you see that are over six hundred volts. You ask, what's six hundred volts? I don't really know. But I do know that they're more easily identified as having the three wires on top. They're the ones that run to the substation, and they provide service to the neighborhood. Those ones would be able to remain up as well as any lines that are attached to them. So for example, out by the airport along Aerospace Drive, we have a three-phase power line that parallels. That one would be able to be, to remain up. Recently, we had discussion with the Stagecoach subdivision. That line that crosses over there, that would be a three-phase line. We've also clearly identified that any power transmission lines are exempt. And they are exempt just because they're not franchise utilities anyway, but we put a clarification in code that they are. So we worked with the power company. We thank Chairman McGrath with the Planning Commission. He seems to have a little expertise in the power and how to work with this and helped us draft this language. We all have reviewed it and believe it is good to promote quality development. Now, I should note that if you are installing new utilities, new electrical subdivision, lines in a subdivision, they are all required to be undergrounded. So new ones underground. Section thirty and thirty-four, this addresses alleys. There are two parts. Number one, it clarifies that if you are proposing a new development that access is an alley and requires site plan review, you are required to pave that alley. We have seen a lot of pressure in our areas around the campus, in our R-three-zone districts where people are demolishing houses and putting in apartment complexes. We have one just right up the street. What we're requiring is that if they are developing those lands with more intense uses of fourplexes or greater, then they would be required to pave the alley from street to street because it would be used as an access to their development. This reduces the amount of wear and tear and the amount of maintenance that the city has to do on those alleys. If any of you all have used this alley here, you can imagine the amount of traffic between Iverson and University and how potholed it gets. The city, seems like one day they grade it, they would then have to regrade it because it just gets potholed. So what we're saying is if any development is using that access, they would be required to pave that. This is also the section that the Planning Commission amended. They amended it to reduce the minimum width of new alleys from thirty feet to twenty-four feet. That would be subject to review by the Public Works Department to ensure that adequate room for utilities exist. Section forty-one is a requirement for utility extensions. Right now, when someone is subdividing their property, they're expected to build roads, water lines, and sewer lines to the edge of their subdivision. The code is silence on stormwater utilities. The Public Works Department has asked that we add stormwater utilities so in areas where we do have a stormwater utility in place, they'd be required to extend that to the edge of their subdivision. Section forty-two is a reduction in the required indoor/outdoor gathering spaces and community amenities on a new commercial development. This was an element of the code that was added with the initial UDC as a suggestion by our consultants that prepared the UDC. Essentially, what it used to, what it did require is that for every twenty-five thousand square feet of space in your building, you're required to provide a public amenity such as benches, a gazebo, an outdoor plaza, those types of items. In working with different developers and looking at the scale of buildings that we usually get in town, we've decided that a smaller threshold would probably be appropriate. So what we've just gone down to is a one-size-fits-all, one amenity, one central gathering space for any lot that is greater than fifty thousand square feet. So for example, if a new Walmart came in, they would have to have an outdoor gathering space. So section forty-three is an amendment to our bonding requirements. Back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen, there were some pretty hefty amendments to chapter fifteen, eighteen regarding our subdivision agreements, our financial securities that are required with development. One of the items that was removed was the ability for a developer to have a letter of credit for a delayed improvement agreement. So let's say someone is developing a building and wants to delay their improvement for five years, ten years, they would have been required to get a bond from a bonding company. The issues with obtaining bonds was difficult for a lot of our local, smaller developers. They had requested that we look into allowing letters of credit again. Derek Taney had worked with, had actually interviewed a lot of our different financial institutions regarding this change, and they came back and said they would support the change to the letter of credit because letters of credits are just as strong as bonds. And letters of credits could possibly even be easier to draw upon if the city were to draw upon that letter of credit. So this is envisioned to make the bonding and financial guarantee process easier for developers. Sections forty-four and forty-five, this is actually just correcting some typographical errors as well as forty, forty-five, forty-four and forty-five. There was a missing line in the code where one portion had been moved up to the other portion. So just as a rearrangement, nothing really changed too much in there. That's just more of a typographical correction. Section forty-six is a new buffer yard requirement that is for any property that is developed or is adjacent to the county. Presently, our landscaping table and our buffer yard table is based on what zoning district is next door. And it was silent on what would have to be the buffer yard between the development and the county. We are proposing an L-one buffer yard on the edge of the county, which is your three-foot buffer yard. It's one of our lower ones. It's the ones that you would see between like uses. For example, a use between a business district and a business district. Sections fifty to fifty-six and item fifty-eight, those all delete unnecessary definitions that can be classified in broad categories such as retail or administrative and professional offices. Some of those are items like sports car, or I think it's like sports memorabilia store, dentist's office, something like, there's several of those types that could be encompassed or just put encompassed in one single definition. That's our proposed amendment package for this early part of the year. There will be more. I hope for any questions you may have regarding this. The chamber is here. They are able to speak towards them.
Well, let's start out with questions. I have a couple, but who else has questions?
I've got a couple, too. So let's start with Dave.
Dave.
Concerning the amendment the Planning Commission made on the alleys.
Concerning the amendment the Planning Commission made on the alleys, um, did they delineate? There's different types of utilities. You, you were talking about what I call deep trench utilities that require an awful lot of dirt to be removed and so forth, sewer and water. Uh, there are other utilities such as gas that are only thirty inches down, electricity's only three feet down. Is there an allowance for putting those type of utilities within the alley to reduce it to twenty-four feet?
Honorable Chair and-
And can I also add, as we're going through this amendment, because there's a bunch of different sections and we're all over the place on topics, can we refer to either sections and if we don't do it, will you help us so we're all on track reading the right stuff?
I'll try.
That was section thirty-four, but-
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Chair and Counselor Polikas, the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting was in regards to the separations required by DEQ between water and sewer lines.
Right.
So those are the ones that the engineering department will be focusing on in their review. We typically um don't know exactly where franchise utilities are going to go. Most of those are moving out of the alleys to the streets anyway with new development. Um, but long story short, they are primarily going to look at the water and sewer utility. Um, and if they have franchise utility, they will be evaluating that as well. But most of this is purely based on the DEQ standard. So they, they did state that it is not impossible to put a water and sewer line in a twenty-four foot alley nowadays because they can't do a slurry or some type of treatment to prevent, put a barrier in. Um, but what it is, is it's just saying there is not an automatic approval of twenty-four feet. They're going to look at it to make sure the proper engineering controls are in place.
I'm not sure what that answer was, but I assume that it would be allowable to put your shallow trench utilities in a twenty-four foot wide alley given your amendments.
Yes.
Um, then the other question I had is paving of alleys, the same thing, I think it's thirty-four. Um, the paving of alleys, is it full alley width, twenty-four feet wide, or is it a paving strip that would be narrower than twenty-four feet, given the fact that it's limited traffic?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Polikas, it would be at least, or it'd be at most the twenty-four foot, which would be the two-way traffic, so you could have vehicles passing on the alley. A problem we have with most of our alleys, yeah, good luck, a problem we have with most of our alleys, the existing ones that are utilizing this are there between sixteen and twenty feet wide, so you'd be seeing a, a lesser pavement width.
Those are, thank you.
Ms. Moore? So, um, I'm in section twenty-nine here regarding the uh power line issue. I'm wondering if it would be possible to um basically provide a sort of a schematic on where this would apply based on our city map? I mean, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I'm, I'm just curious if that's a possibility.
Honorable Chair and Counsel, or Honorable Mayor and Counselor Pierce, I think that's a possibility. I will check with the um power company, see what we can get.
Okay, um, okay, um, and I guess that, that'll be fine for now. With that section, it's, it's a little concerning to me because I don't exactly know where all this might apply and might not apply within the city and, and potential growth going out of, you know, moving, moving out. So, um, I guess I'd just like to see it in a, in a different way. There's also a typo on line five of section twenty-nine, did you catch that? You're supposed to have TWO for two. So, um-
I'll get that corrected.
Yeah.
I saw it in the staff report.
It's just minor, but, um, yeah, so, so that's it with that. Um, my other question is, is a little more general, and I don't know if this applies to this or not, but, um, last time we had some major changes to uh plats and final plats and, and all what you guys do, and pardon my ignorance on, on this. A lot of subdivision stuff came in kind of under the wire to get things so they could be um grandfathered into the old way of doing things. Could we have some sort of a, a, a section in here that says your time's up? I mean, is that, uh, do you understand, I mean, because we've, that's now been, how many years has that been? Eight years, and we're still addressing those situations under the old, now eight-year-old guidelines. And maybe it's not appropriate for here, and maybe it's a, a different discussion time, but I think allowing eight years to get all that stuff in is, is really quite generous, and I'm, I'm just wondering if we need to put it either here or someplace else that, you know, in another two years, you're done, or, or s- give, or, you, I mean, I'm just guessing on a, you know, just some sort of proposal that says we're, we're done with this. I don't know if this is the spot for that.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Pierce, uh, yes, we did have one subdivision that came in at like four fifty-nine on the last day of the old code, and that one still exists today. They're held to those old standards where if they're, they don't record a final plat every two years, it expires. That's Indian Ridge out in northeast Laramie. Um, the change to the five years, it is not going to affect or allow any existing plat to now have five years, they'll still be under their three-year timeline. Um, any new preliminary plats that are approved after this ordinance is done would go to the five years. Um, we looked at the potential of trying to, one developer had us, can we retroactively go back to our preliminary plat and make it five years? But then we ran into the problem, we have this group of plats that are three years, we have the other group, the other plat that's two years, and it became problematic. If you guys wish to just say you have two years and that's it, there is a section of code we could amend. I would like to have time for staff to talk a little bit more with the city attorney on the ramifications of that, but it is in, I believe it's chapter fifteen oh two or fifteen oh four, the transitional regulations section. Um, so it could be something that's done. Regarding this change from three to five years right now, we really, we don't anticipate any plats coming in under the wire because I don't think there would be any benefit of the-
Right, my, my concern is not the three to five, it's the, it's the eight-year previous stuff, and I didn't realize it was just one, or ma- maybe it is just one-
Just one.
More, but I think we need, if we need to, and I don't know if we need to, but I think I'd, just bringing it up for conversation because we might need to address that because it seems like when they've come forward, however many there were, it's by far the most problematic and time-consuming um to kind of bring forward and make all the changes and variances and adjustments and just trying to eliminate that work, if that makes sense.
Yeah, um, staff can, well, Honorable Mayor and Counselor Pierce, we'll uh talk with staff and our C. Attorney on our options that we can do there.
Yeah, it might not even be legal, but I, I think if we could address, that'd be great.
Any other questions?
No, that's it on my list, but I'm gonna read this much better.
Hiltzer Schuster?
Uh, question on that paving of alleys. Did you say that would be on uh anything that had a fourplex or more, or would that be all alleys from now on?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Schuster, um, this is for alleys that are, if they have a site plan review, which basically is a fourplex or more, that would require paving or alleys where they're proposing direct access onto that alley.
So it's actually acting-
So unpaved alleys um for new developments um would be allowed.
Okay, so like R-one subdivision could have, okay, thank you. And then just a curious one on Dave's discussion there. Um, my, the subdivision I live lives on a hill and there is no actual alley, but I know there's a right-of-way easement. Can I ask what size right-of-way easement it is if I ever have to take down my fences?
Um, Honorable Mayor and Counselor Schuster, I believe that is a twenty-foot wide off the top of my head, and that, because that development was in the late seventies.
Correct.
At those times, most of the alleys plotted were-
I know water sewers out in the street, but electrical, cable.
Yeah, um, Honorable Mayor and Counselor Schuster, if you visit our website, cityoflermy.org/zoning, we have a new interactive GIS map that will actually let you select your lot, click on it, and pull up the underlying plat. So then if there is a easement that is labeled on the plat, it'll be shown on that plat. We can walk you through that if you'd like.
The back just dive every direction, so I know that some people have the easement, some people don't have the easement and so forth.
Ms. Moore, did you have a follow-up question, something-
Well, I- Yeah, if I could, so regarding a, a fourplex development or something, so basically the alley would need to be paved when it's acting like a driveway, so to speak. I mean, is that in layman's terms kind of a rough way to?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Pierce, yes, that's correct. If it's serving as access, a driveway.
Like a driveway, okay.
So I have a couple of questions for you. Um, so start with section fourteen, their preliminary plat. Um, and maybe this is something you can bring back to us next time, but my question is, so I understand the idea that you want to do larger subdivisions at one time to get the economy a sale, scale, but I'm wondering if that's in direct conflict with our housing study. A shorter timeframe incentivizes the developer to develop it and move on it, and giving them a longer time to do that would be a disincentive to creating housing in the short term for Laramie, which is what we know we need to do, we need to continue to encourage development. So how are those two things reconciled? If we're telling developers they can wait five years and then file their final plat and then have even more time, you could have potentially how long before they had to develop between those steps?
Honorable Mayor and, and Counsel, you could have up to, a preliminary plat could be approved one day and then they could wait four years and then submit. Um, that's a, a valid point, that's a decision that you guys are going to have to make. Do we want to have folks under the gun to try to file a plat quicker or sooner? Um, what we would end up having for the subdivisions in the, within the three-year time periods is you could have smaller subdivisions, two to three lots at a time, or you could have larger ones.
I'm just curious, and maybe there's something else to be able to weigh in on as well, is that, that balance between the larger subdivisions and encouraging development? So how long, remind me how long they have to complete development after they file a final plat?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, um, when a developer files a final plat and it goes through the city review process and it gets approved by the council, um, that approval by the council has to happen within three years of either the final plat happening or the preliminary plat being approved. They have two years to complete those improvements.
After that, okay. So potential, if we change it to this, they would have seven years, essentially, as opposed to right now they have five.
That is correct.
Okay, so that's one of the questions I think I want to talk about more next time. Um, and then on section twenty-two, which is the enforcement issue changes, um, so I'm curious as to what enforcement issues specifically have created this change suggested by staff. Um, what temporary uses will be allowed specifically? What is the timeframe that those uses would be allowed? And will the uses, uh, will uses be allowed that are not permitted in that zoned area? Like having specifically, um, I'm missing the word, semi-trailer dropped.
Storage container.
Thank you, storage container dropped on a vacant lot when that's not permitted in that zoning. So I'd like to talk about that. And then, uh, section twenty-nine on the uh power wires. So we had quite a robust conversation the last time this came up, and it was really spurred by some very serious concerns from a couple of neighbors, I think there was only one or two, um, going back to a subdivision that has tried repeatedly to get that regulation removed and uh get it to try to not apply to their plat. I think it would be a- appropriate and appreciated if the council was given a, kind of a summary of the conversations that have happened, just because I know those have been in the last year, right, or the last two years, something like that? And also a reflection of what the neighborhood concerns were. Because one of my other questions was which groups were specifically included in making these recommendations? Because I'm, I'm concerned that the neighborhoods were not included, the ones that voiced opposition to the power lines. So I think that would be something to have for next time if we can get that summary. And I think that that's all I have for now.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, if you would like, I can uh quickly address the temporary use item real quick.
Sure.
Um, the actual item that created the discussion was there were shipping containers located off of Garfield Street, um, behind the Quality Inn, um, owned by a local landowner. Um, they were doing a swap out of the furniture in their hotel, and they own a undeveloped parcel, a lot, that is between, it's behind the flood control channel on Garfield next to the dentist's office there. Sent an enforcement letter, talked to them, came to a solution, um, they moved it. Uh, they'd indicated that as part of their business, they oftentimes have to swap out their furniture, so they would like a, the ability to ask for permission to have that done. So that's what triggered that idea for that uh temporary use to be allowed on a lot that is undeveloped. So it's those types of, those types of scenarios we're looking at. So that is the one. I know we had another shipping container issue with another hotel um in another area, that's not the one that triggered the discussion, it was a different one. So shipping containers are a huge problem lately, and just reminder, there are accessory buildings and you can't just pop them down in your front yard, backyard, side yard, you have to, they, they need to be addressed, we're working on it. Um, and-
Is there a policy regarded to, or I guess, have you guys figured out what you would use, allow for temporary uses and how long you guys would let those go for?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Counsel, uh, chapter fifteen-ten actually specifies our temporary uses. Temporary uses are, run similarly to our home occupations, which is you are able to begin a temporary use provided you comply with certain conditions, you're not taking up the required parking spaces, you're not impeding like vision of the intersection, you're not in a fire lane, those types of items. Uh, temporary uses are summarized as, um, things like temporary seasonal holiday sales, bazaars, tree lots, reef sales, so what you see over on the corner of Colorado and Stone Range in west Laramie. Technically, that's not allowed because the land's not developed. This would allow something like that with permission. Temporary real estate offices, um, contractors' offices, off-site auto sales, so if you were to have a, we probably wouldn't approve an off-site auto sale on a vacant lot, um, farmers' markets, temporary travel trailer assemblies, less than five, five uh days, storage containers, shipping containers, fruit and vegetable stands, um, roadside stands and auction, those types of items are all considered minor temporary uses.
Thank you. Hiltzer Schuster?
Now that you say that one, my neighbor across the street, he moved from Alaska and the way he did is he bid a shipping container, then it was there about sixty days on the street as he tried to empty it and unload it into his house. So I understand what you're saying because it was kind of an ice war, but I don't know if that would have been permissible, that it basically was just done and I don't think anybody complained to you about it, though.
Yeah. And Honorable Mayor and Counsel, regarding section twenty-nine, the power line, um, that item was really in direct follow-up to the city council meetings we had, um, where we worked with the Chamber Business Alliance. Uh, we also worked with Rocky Mountain Power, had meetings with them and invited them into the picture. With our code text amendments, we um typically don't reach out to the public um other than, you know, our notifications in the newspaper for our legal ads, so the only people that were involved in those discussions were the city, uh, the Chamber Business Alliance and Rocky Mountain Power.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions on first reading here? Okay, I think you can sit down now. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, go back, any discussion from council, this is first reading, come back on second reading in two weeks. Any discussion, councilor Polikas?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First off, on the underground utilities, I think what you're proposing is a very reasonable compromise. Um, I don't think to re- to try to remove these high voltage three phase power lines um, that have been in our community for a long time is just. It's very, very expensive to do and this is what's been holding things up, this is why there's a big discussion about it. Um, the way it's worded now, where any new three phases to go in, they would be underground, but the existing ones in our community can stay there. All the, when, when they talked about subdivisions and burying power lines and so forth and so on, the main, the main concern for those was the residential lines going to houses and so forth. And to get those things underground, it wasn't to, wasn't meant to be a pure, let's put every single power line in our community underground because it just doesn't work that way. Uh, and a good, this is a great example in our community because we've got some really high, super high voltage transmission lines that go through our community, some of them go through our property that we own, i.e. Sarah Scott and Turner Tract. So I think what's being proposed makes sense. It works from a financial standpoint and also works from an aesthetically pleasing standpoint. Uh, the one concern I have, we're moving forward with is the paving of the alleys if they're being used for parking. There's, there's some inherent problems with that. Um, it makes sense to pave alleys if you've got, let's just say you have a fourplex and there's four parking places or eight parking places behind there. It does, there is quite a bit of traffic going. From the standpoint of traffic on a daily basis, there's not a lot of traffic, but there is use of that unit uh, in the alleys and it, and it does create potholes and so forth and so on. Now here's the challenge to it though. A lot of these new subdivisions and old ones have alleys that are two blocks long. There, there's quite a distance. If you're building a fourplex and it's one, one lot in, all you really need is access from that lot to the nearest street. And that's what you're, that's what you're, your guests, that's what your people that live in that apartment are gonna use. They're not gonna use the other access, particularly if it's paved. Anybody in their right mind's not gonna go down a dirt road, not gonna go down a dirt alley. They're gonna use the paved part of that alley to access their property. So it makes more sense to me to have paving to the nearest intersection, but not having to pave the whole alley. It, it would be, it doesn't make sense for a person building, say a fourplex or an eightplex, one lot in, to have to pave the alley all the way up, which could end up being whatever, eight hundred or thousand feet. So I would probably be putting forward an amendment to change that to the nearest intersection versus having to pave the whole alley. The other concern I have is it makes, listen, alleys aren't something you, you run into traffic going both ways in. I mean, I, I've, I've got properties on alleys and in my whole lifetime, I've never met anybody nose to nose in that alley, using that alley for the various times I use it, it's just not something you do. Um, to pave it the twenty-four foot width, from a utopia standpoint, from an ideal standpoint, it works. From a practical standpoint, it seems to me we could do something less and still achieve what we want to achieve and that's not tearing up our alleys. So those are the two concerns that I would have and I'll probably try to put an amendment through the next time we, we come before us. Um, and that's, that's all the only comments I have as far as all the revisions go.
Other comments, council? All right, city clerk, can you do roll call please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson absent McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
No.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's seven yeses, one no and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. I expect uh, some pretty good discussion on second reading, so we'll set some time. All right, uh, let's go on to item number fourteen, councilor Shumway.
Thank you, your honor. Um, this resolution is a document that we're gonna hopefully provide to the state legislature highlighting that Laramie is a showcase for the state of Wyoming in several areas. Education, uh, business development, tourism, sporting events. And, um, also to point out that there has been a recent trend of reduction of, of, um, funds to the city of Laramie and that we really need, they really need to consider us as the front door of Wyoming that has thousands and thousands of people that come and see us as the, you know, major city and uh, also the showcase for Wyoming. So anyway, I make, I make this motion. I move that resolution number two thousand eighteen dash zero five requesting legislature review of municipal funding formula uh, be approved and that, and that we authorize the mayor and clerk to, to sign.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. City manager, you have any further comments on this?
Mayor, no, I don't. I would just quickly mention there are two, um, minor typos that I would like to correct in the final version, none changing the intent or the substance of the resolution.
Any questions? Questions? Yeah. I assume one of them is that.
Correct, where, yeah, I wrote one in by hand, the other one I didn't, so.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I don't have any, uh, questions at this time, I do have comments, though.
Hiltar Schuster, do you have a question?
Do we want all of us councillors to sign this instead of just you and the clerk? It's up to you, it's up to you, I just.
I agree with it.
I don't know how big a statement you want to make to them that have ten signatures, including the clerk, instead of just two.
I'm, I'm not sure we'll have councillor Hanson back in time to sign it.
Not if you guys want me to take it on Thursday, we'll, we'll be missing.
Then I just better go with two.
I have no preference one way or the other. City manager, do you have?
No, we're, we're fine, we can add the signature, um, lines. However, um, it probably, the timeliness, as you know, of submitting this is at issue. So if we do add all the lines, can everyone come in and sign in the next, say, twenty-four to forty-eight hours?
Yeah, we'll be missing councillor Hanson and, and councillor Stoner. So, and councillor Polikas.
Yes.
So we're down to, we would be down to six.
It'd be clean.
I think we better just. This time, I think we better.
Or you could just sign, couldn't we just sign their name? That would probably be wrong, right?
Yeah, that would probably be.
Sorry, Shane, you just really can't do that.
You could sign my name.
Have you told me you're there?
Sign my name, whatever you want.
Vice Mayor, do you have comments?
I did have a comment, I really appreciate how you captured, um, our sentiment, you know, after that discussion, um, in this, uh, resolution. So I, so I appreciate that, I think it's, it's a, a quick, easy read, yet it's quite to the, to the point and concise. So I appreciate that. And, um, yeah. Thanks.
Any other comments? Hiltar Schuster.
Comment, um, three of us went down and two others took their own vehicles. And, uh, we sat through that meeting and it was kind of different. Um, I expected a lot of cities to be there and as far as cities, we were the only one that went.
Councillor Schuster, I have to correct you, the mayor of Alvin was there as well. He did not speak though.
He did not speak, okay, because there was a couple of people that spoke on different comments because the municipality of counties was there, the municipality of cities was there and then, uh, uh, our group of, uh, us three, Jane, Pierce, uh, Andy Somerville and myself, uh, Janine Jordan was there and Malia Brown was there. I think that was all of us from the city of Laramie that was there. And, uh, it, it was quite different. I, I was a little shocked the way the meeting was ran and, okay.
Well, councillor Schuster, I would be going back on Thursday.
I will be.
If it's in hand, to do it again.
I will be heading there, through there, probably a little before you, but you know my reason of going through, I am not stopping.
Any other comments on this? Are there any comments from the public on this? Would you like to see the resolution? Okay. City, okay, city clerk, will you do roll call please?
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson absent Gabriel.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos and one absent.
Thank you, that motion carries. Onto item number fifteen, public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a comment tonight? Okay, none. Um, next item on the agenda is consideration of future council work session topics. Does anybody have any suggestions on work sessions? Vice Mayor.
So I noticed that, um, uh, councillor Shumway has parking and enforcement and I, I guess I would like to, to second that and maybe, um, inquire on a timeline for that. And I will tell you my reason for this. It has to do with the, the day that we had yesterday because when, um, one of the things we happened to learn yesterday is UW's. UW's housing plan and with that housing plan, um, parking is not addressed in that particular housing plan, although they mentioned that they were going to do a parking study. So when, and it was a little concerning because I, I think when you, you build new dorms and as much as I agree that they absolutely need to build new dorms, I think they need to address parking. And, um, at least I think they should be addressing parking because when you build a house, you decide if you're gonna have a garage. When you have a business, you decide how much parking you need. So I think there needs to be some discussion related to parking. So I don't know if we could add that to whatever councillor Shumway's intent was or maybe, you know, move that up somehow or, or talk to them and have them expand more on their parking plan that they're talking about and maybe why it's not in conjunction with the housing plan. And, you know, I don't, I don't know. But, um, and maybe they don't normally come with a parking plan when you're building dorms, I don't know, but. It's, it was very concerning to me, given the fact that we have many parking issues near the university, so.
Right, um, mayor, council, um, just an update to the issue of timeline, as I understand it, for this work session. So both the University of Wyoming, and Andy, you jump in if you know anything different or newer. Uh, you, both the University of Wyoming and Laramie Main Street were going to undertake their own sort of assessment of, for UW, parking issues surrounding the campus, specifically in the residential areas, which have been of concern to the council in recent years. For Main Street, uh, looking at parking downtown and trying to come, uh, both of those entities, UW and Main Street, uh, working through their process and then bringing recommendations to the council that would form kind of the basis, uh, for this work session. So they would bring those ideas forward as two separate entities, staff would vet those, we looked at practicalities and then we'd kind of do a comprehensive work session. So the reason we haven't had this is because we're waiting on these two entities. Um, your point, councillor Pierce, is noted about the comment made yesterday that the next step following the housing study is that the university would, um, update or, or redo the parking and transportation study from like two thousand seven or eight. Um, and they did say that they would be doing that. So to be candid, I'm not certain what progress UW has made as of tonight, nor am I certain what progress Main Street has made, but I understood they were both working independently on that. So we can reach out and try and figure out where they're at and how much longer they think they need before we could come forward and really have a discussion with you guys.
I can add, the comments from downtown, they are working on that right now through Laramie Main Street and DDA for their, for their piece. They have a group assembled that's meeting and, and doing all of that good stuff. I don't have a timeline on when they intended to get from council, but I think we can easily get that, um, from Free Sherwood. But I, I definitely echo the vice mayor's concerns about parking and the timeline and also integrating that into housing plans. For me, it seems, uh, it would seem best for the community to do this cooperatively and look at transit, multimodal transit throughout the city and parking before we start putting up new dorms at University of Wyoming and wishing we hadn't put something there when we really needed it over here and trying to do this holistically. I think that makes a lot of sense.
They'll just tear one dorm down.
Any other suggestions or comments on work sessions? Okay.
Some, we ought to mention those, UW hopes to tear a dorm down this summer, they stated that at the meeting.
Actually, I'll go a little off the agenda on the vice mayor's comments if nobody will kick me out of my seat. Um, I've got it in my bag, the UW housing plan is available online right now. I got, we stole.
You need mine?
I think three copies, Brian's got one right there. Um, no, I just wanted to let the council know that it's available and you can review it. The trustees will be looking at it for the first time on Thursday, James, is that right? So they'll be looking at it on Thursday, so it is now out in the public domain for discussion. There's several scenarios and options, there's not a specific, we will do this and this and this and this. I think the trustees have to, at least how it was presented in the legislature, the trustees need to look at that and digest it and go forward. But they did specifically talk about potentially tearing down Crane and Hill starting this summer. All right, um, no questions on upcoming meetings for anybody? Okay. Oh, vice mayor?
So the question is basically to Angie regarding our meetings with Mr. Phil, Phil? Mr. Piper?
Iber, Piper?
Will we be getting notification maybe tomorrow?
Um, your honor, uh, council, you received an email tonight from me.
Oh, okay.
With a, with the, with the schedule for everybody, so it has everybody's times.
Okay.
Please double check them as, you know, conversations we maybe had earlier may have, it may have changed slightly. Um, and there are two different room locations, so make sure you check which room you're in because as the day goes on, um, he will be moving to a different location, but it will all be in this building.
Okay.
Okay? And I will let you know if anything changes.
Okay.
Via email.
Excellent, great. All right, so we'll go councillor Schuster.
I move that the city council adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Second by councillor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.